On that note, good evening, everybody. I am going to call this meeting to order. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
A motion by Councilmember Henry. A second. And a second by Councilmember McKnight. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. All right, we're at the point of the evening where we are gonna open the floor to anybody who is here tonight for community comment. So, if you want to come up, you get to introduce yourself, say your name, and then your address. And anybody who wants to talk can come on up. We'll go together, we'll come together. And then, there should be a little green light. Okay. Thank you. Lucas, there's a little, like, button where it says push.
Yeah.
Is the green light on? Okay, okay. Do you want to say your name at least?
Hi, my name is Kim Russell, but I am here to speak on behalf of Lucas Russell, who did the work to prepare this presentation. Our address is three four two Fullerton Avenue in Carver. And I would like to say he had a hundred percent control over this presentation. He would like to present to you why we should have a bowling alley in Carver. Would you like to do the slides? Okay. Um, he thinks it would be fun, because bowling is fun, right? So, a lot of people like to bowl, but every bowling alley is at least fifteen minutes away. It would be close to us. We want to walk more, right? And if it was close to us, we could probably walk there or take a short drive to get there. And it would help draw people into Carver. Businesses bring in more tax money for Carver, and more businesses will bring more people to Carver, so that's a win-win. So, we would like to present Lucas's idea that it would be fun to have a bowling alley in Carver someday, and we thank you for your time.
Super. Lucas, do you mind if we ask you questions?
Sure.
Okay. Is this a school project, or was this just something that you were like, I want a bowling alley, and I'm gonna come to council and see if we can get a bowling alley?
Um, I just thought of this idea one morning.
Okay. Very cool. Well, thank you for taking the initiative. It's not a bowling alley, but we do have a new park going into Carver. It's gonna be Iron, well, it's an expansion of an existing park. So, Ironwood Park is the park that's up by Carver Elementary. Do you know what I'm talking about, where there are the lighted lacrosse fields and soccer fields? And as part of the expansion that we're doing for that park, there's gonna be some permanent games there. So, have you ever played bags, where you throw the bean bags? Into, that's gonna be there, and then there's gonna be a ping pong table there, too. So, those will be, like, permanent games there, that you, you bring your own bags, bags, you bring your own ping pong balls and paddles. But there'll be some, not anything close to bowling, but recreational opportunities up there. So, um, that's what I know of, that's somewhat similar and can get you out walking and active. Kinda like what you talked to. Again, way far away from a bowling alley. Yeah, go ahead. So, you, um, you like bowling, so do you go bowling a lot?
Uh, not that often.
Okay, but you like it when you do it?
Yep.
Yeah. Do you know what bowling alley is your favorite?
Uh, probably Bowler or Chock-a-Bee Bowl.
Okay, where is the first one?
Um, in Eden Prairie, Bowler is.
Okay.
And then Chock-a-Bee Bowl, Chock-a-Bee.
Okay, thank you.
What's your handicap?
Bowling? Yeah. No. I don't know if you understand that in bowling.
I don't.
He just would like to bowl as well as his grandpa did someday.
What's your high score?
Uh, probably one hundred thirty-two.
Oh, geez. Is that with the bumpers or without?
Oh, without.
That's without, okay, better than. That's why you wanna bowl.
That's not convinced, though.
Yeah.
Lucas, my benchmark is always trying to get over a hundred, so he's not too shabby. Anybody else have any questions about this?
You wanna do a picture?
Yeah.
You wanna do a picture at the council?
Lucas, can we do a picture? We'll come around, we'll meet in the front. I'll let you be in the, I'll just do this.
I don't know how I do it.
He's thought his mom and dad should just open a bowling alley, and he said, we can't do that, so you have to talk to the council. So, that's how we ended up here. I can't, though. All right, Lucas, wait a minute. Yeah, that's true, is that all right?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, step back just a little bit.
Just a little bit.
So you brought your bowling ball.
You're made for politics.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor and Congress members, and everybody, for your time. Thank you.
Off to add that to the twenty twenty-three budget? Thanks, buddy.
Good night. Hey, the ice cream shop, oh no, it isn't open on Monday nights, never mind. We'll check. It wasn't today. It was, it was. Oh, yeah, there were, there was. Make sure you got ice cream, Lucas, okay? Good man, see ya. Um, all right, any other community comments for this evening? All right, um, seeing none, we don't have any presentations and reports. There are no public hearings. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
With a motion by Councilmember Henry.
I'll second.
And a second by Councilmember McKnight. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Um, all right, business items, item eight point one, Sixth Street Improvement Projects Bids and Agreements. Mr. Schmidt, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Here tonight, we're, we're at a point now where we're getting ready to move into the next stage of the Sixth Street West, West Project. We have three actions before you for consideration tonight. So, this, this is a journey that started way back in March of twenty twenty-one, actually, so it's something that has been in process for about a year now, and something, obviously, that has been on people's minds well before that, too, so Sixth Street is a, is a, is a stretch of road from Jonathan Carver Parkway to Broadway that is in need of some pretty major rehabilitation efforts, as everybody in the room understands, so we're at the point now where we received bids for that project. We opened bids on April twelfth, twenty twenty-two, and we received six bids for that project, so that was, it was good to see that there was a lot of interest. Based on the tabulation of bids that's in your packet, you can see that the bidding was competitive process. We had three really tight bids at the front of the, front of the list there. The low bid was from BCM Construction out of Fairbolt, Minnesota, in the amount of two million, three hundred twenty-five thousand, seven hundred forty-six dollars and fifteen cents. And, um, there were some others that were pretty, um, close behind them, so got some good bids. Bids came in where we suspected. We were hopeful that we could maybe get a number that was in the three twos, but, um, the, based on where the market is bidding this spring, it was really in line with what we were thinking it was going to be, so um, really no surprises there. So, that's the first thing in, for consideration tonight is to award a contract to BCM Construction. Uh, the second thing tonight, um, the LRIP Grant Resolution with MINDOT. So, that is something that needs to be executed with MINDOT before construction begins. The copy of that grant agreement is in your packet. That's been reviewed and approved by both MINDOT, City Attorney David Anderson. So, that's the second item for consideration tonight. And then the third item for consideration is, uh, something that MINDOT calls a master partnership contract. And what that allows for cities to do is, uh, particularly, particularly for construction projects is uh, MINDOT does plant inspections at botuminous plants, concrete-ready mixed plants, for a wide array of projects, so any, any projects that are, um, any state or state aid projects, they're certified plants. So, MINDOT already does plant testing there, so they allow the city to partner with them and basically utilize their inspection staff that's already there to do plant inspections for our state aid projects, so that, that's a mechanism that allows us to utilize MINDOT and offer some efficiencies for the inspection side of the equation, so as far as schedule goes, we'd be looking at awarding tonight, obviously. The next big thing that I wanted to talk about, so through the approval process with MINDOT, so to get final, uh, state aid approval, we had one item that did come up with that process, and that was the intersection of Sixth and Broadway. So, as you know, that was something that we were looking to convert into a, a through route, essentially, a curve. In the first, the middle of the MINDOT, there was no comments on that intersection. At final plan, a hundred percent plan review, um, they made a comment that that curve didn't meet, um, horizontal sight distance, or, uh, horizontal curvature, I should say. So, it was something that, um, obviously for a new alignment, it's something that we would obviously build into the design, given that it was an existing configuration, um, something that they weren't commenting on originally.
Aaron, can you tell me what horizontal alignment or whatever you said?
Yeah, so based on, so that's a pretty tight corner there. It's pretty much a ninety-degree corner, right? So, there's a stop sign there today, and MINDOT is saying that, in order to get approved plans, you need to leave the stop sign in there. So, there is a process to, to request a change to that, and that's what, um, Dan and I are gonna be pursuing. It's called the, the variance committee at MINDOT, and that's something that meets every, uh, June. So, we'd be going to the variance committee formally requesting that they would allow us to convert this to a, um, continuous, just a curve with a advisory speed limit, fifteen mile an hour speed limit. Uh, it's something that isn't uncommon. There's several, there's one in Carver County I can think of specifically. Trunk Highway two eighty-four, just out of Cologne, there's a ninety-degree corner right north of Benton Lake that is obviously, does not meet any kind of design criteria for horizontal curvature. So, I think we have a really good case, but can't make any promises. It tells us to go to the committee for review, so that's something that I'd recommend doing, because we think it's ultimately the best solution for that area, given the configuration, um, given Broadway North doesn't really see any traffic anymore, so it's really how it wants to be, but we gotta go through another hoop to make that happen, so the one item that you will see on the sixteenth of May, we'll bring back, the city council has to basically, um, adopt a resolution that supports the pursuit of this variance, which is a necessary part of the application that's due in June, so you'll see that in, in, at the next meeting, if it's something that the council so chooses to do. Mr. Henry?
Um, will this potentially push back the start dates for, for the project and move the end dates back? If, if it's, will the state allow the project to move forward with a stop sign there and then offer the variance or the removal afterwards?
Yes.
Okay, so it's not gonna impede?
The plan's approved right now.
It's not gonna impede anything other than just the process of sign or no sign?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. And just a little bit of, uh, what I know right now, I've had just some pretty basic, uh, conversations with BCM, and it sounds like they're probably not gonna end up getting started until July, based on just how their schedules are working out right now, material lead times, which we've already been talking about, so I don't think it's gonna be an issue regardless, but yeah, so something that we look forward to hopefully getting ironed out in June.
If they're not starting till July, um, are they well aware of the, of steamboat days and that whole thing for Sixth Street, so that is gonna be just fine, even if they start in July?
Yep, so, um, as I mentioned at the last meeting, we built in some items into the contract stating that for the steamboat day's weekend, the road has to be gravel surface, equipment has to be removed from out of the Sixth, Sixth Street roadway area, so that's all part of the contract and built in. The expectation's very clear on that, so so, um, that's kind of where things are at. Um, as far as the budget goes, um, before you was a three point two million dollar budget. That preserves about a hundred and fifteen thousand in construction contingency, so that's above and beyond, you know, what's already built into the contract. And then, it also includes, uh, burying all the overhead utilities on Sixth Street, which is estimated at a cost of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars per my most recent correspondence with Xcel Energy, so those two items are built into that three point two million, so.
Can you just walk through the math a little bit, right, so the two point three million for BCM Construction, plus the one fifteen contingency, plus the one fifty, how do I get to three point two million?
So, the three point two million is the total project cost.
So, what, what other component am I missing?
Primarily, engineering's the biggest component of it.
Thank you.
Some, some other indirect costs that the city tracks, but
Okay.
mo, the majority of it's engineering, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
That's what I was missing. Okay, thank you.
I have a, I have one comment for the actual resolution, the one seventeen dash twenty-two. It's titled Resolution Accepting Bid Sixth Street West Improvements. The first sentence, um, it says City of Carver, Sixth West Street. So, we may want to flip-flop those words around, because it looks like a home address of Sixth West. Um, it's on the resolution, one seventeen.
Oh, in that first paragraph, you mean?
Yeah.
The header's correct, but the first.
Yeah, the first sentence says City of Carver, Sixth West Street. Yeah, if we can get that flipped.
All right, with that, any other questions or comments?
I have some questions. In the packet, there's the, um, the, the MINDOT contract, so that must also be then the master partnership contracts. So, on page fifty-four, and it comes up more than once, so I don't know if there's two contracts?
There are two contracts.
Okay, thank you, because I was scrolling through, and I've seen the same paragraph.
MINDOT has a contract that was used, they do them in five-year periods.
Okay.
The one that started in twenty seventeen and is about to expire, um, in June. So, it just so happens to be now that the council, now that we're a state aid community, we're, we're approving both contracts. One until, that'll get us between through till June of this year, and then the other one will take over for the following five years.
Okay.
So, we're actually approving two, two master partnership contracts.
Okay.
Which is a little unusual, but that's just the way the sequencing fell into place.
Great, thank you. Um, so, within the packet, I'm on page fifty-four of sixty-eight, and this was the same on both of them. Um, the three point three roadway maintenance, I just want to make sure I, um, understand, like, for the word party, you know, do I, when I insert city, when I insert who our contractor is, what's MINDOT? So, when it comes to road maintenance, it's my understanding this, this city's completely responsible. But can MINDOT come and say, hey, this doesn't meet some type of, one of our requirements? And we need you, the city, to, um, make a change on the maintenance? I mean, it's very clear, it's not about the reconstruction.
So, one thing to keep in mind, I bundled this with the same, um, Sixth Street item, but this is really just an overall item that we can now utilize this contract for any state aid effort. So, basically, that item is just saying that if, for some reason, the City of Carver would request that MINDOT helps us plow streets on a specific day because we just can't do it, this contract allows us to, to do that. And then, we'd have to pay them to do it, so it's just, Dave, please add anything else, but this is just listing what, some of the things that can happen with this contract.
But it would be us, the city, that would initiate. We would say, you know, there's ditch spraying, or there's, and, and we pay for it. Like, what I want to avoid is that this is, um, great getting the grant money, but that we then still own the road, that they can't come and say, hey, you know, you spent our money, we want it done this way, or, you know, you need to fix this and pay the full, do you understand? Does that make sense?
I, I think, this is really a way to streamline the maintenance of city streets through a MINDOT contract. And the road authority doesn't change. This doesn't, this agreement is not going to make MINDOT the road authority for city streets, nor is it vice versa. So, um, I think that's what you're asking?
I think, yeah, Aaron, I think the question is, can MINDOT make us do any of this road maintenance work? So, I, that's a no.
No, no. This is just one of the things that this contract allows us to do with them.
So, the city, we dictate a hundred percent of the maintenance that we're gonna conduct on the roadway.
All right, and I was just kind of too, in thinking of not too recently, you know, with the bridge, you know, having our design on there, so it was, that kind of caught, part of it caught my attention, too, on, you know, that they wouldn't be able to dictate something that we would want.
Yep.
Or don't think we want.
At the city's request.
Okay, city's request. All right, that was my question.
Anyone else have any other questions? All right, we got a bunch of motions.
Well, I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution one seventeen dash twenty-two, awarding a contract to BCM Construction Incorporated in the amount of two million, three hundred twenty-five thousand, seven hundred and forty-six dollars and seventeen cents, seventeen cents for the Sixth Street West Improvements Project. Do you need me, Brent, at all to call out that switching of the wording in the ordinance?
Okay.
I'll second.
By Councilmember Mock, and a second by Councilmember Henry. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution one eighteen dash twenty-two, authorizing the execution of a local road improvement grant program agreement with the Department of Transportation for the Sixth Street West Improvements Project.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Mayor Johnson, and a second by Councilmember McKnight. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution one hundred nineteen dash twenty-two, authorizing the execution of the master partnership contracts with the state of Minnesota.
I'll second.
A motion by Councilmember Sarah, and a second by, uh, Councilmember Mock. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to the twenty twenty-two street maintenance project. Mr. Schmidt, again.
All right, so this one's a lot simpler, only one action on this one. So, this is the twenty twenty-two, two-street maintenance project. This is the first year of the new five-year pavement management program that the city adopted last fall. This is in the Eagle Ridge Development. So, uh, Skyview Lane, Debbie Lane, those streets in that area. So, um, the council, or, uh, we opened bids on April twenty-sixth of twenty twenty-two, and we received four bids tabulated in the, bid tabulation in your packet, and GMH Asphalt of Chaska, Minnesota, was the low bid in the amount of four hundred seventeen thousand, two hundred and twenty-eight dollars and twenty-seven cents. So, this is a, this was a good number we got, uh, from GMH Asphalt. It actually ended up coming in about five percent under our estimates, so that was good to see. The other ones were in the four fifty to four sixty range, so a little more in line with what we were anticipating with the, with the project budget, so um, right off the top, we're, we're coming in a little bit better, which is really good, good way to start the project, so yeah, so basically, tonight is up for consideration, awarding a contract to GMH Asphalt, and then to follow would be construction, so based on my preliminary conversations, it sounds like, uh, GMH wants to get started here pretty soon, so probably even in May is the, is the goal, so expect that to be happening sooner than later is, is, uh, kind of what it's looking like.
So, Aaron, was there a portion of this plan that included, uh, seal coating and crack sealing? And is that included in this bid?
That is correct, and no, it is not. So, we sent that out separately as a quote project. Since it was a different type of work, it was just easy to quote it from, um, those smaller companies. So, I'm looking to bring that back here, um, either the sixteenth or the first meeting in June.
Okay, so that's a quote versus a bid, because it doesn't mean?
Yep, because that's, that was only like a thirty thousand dollar, um, project, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Um, are road restrictions off yet?
They came off, uh, today.
Today?
Yeah.
All right, so then we will be able to start soon?
It's the goal.
How are we gonna notice that neighborhood? Have we done much with that yet?
Yeah, I think we already sent one notice out, letting them know that they, and I'm not sure how recent it was, but we'll do our typical, kind of, uh, project introduction. Usually, the first step is some type of reconstruction meeting with the contractor and our team. And once we have a schedule, um, we'll notify residents of that schedule, provide them with, uh, project contact. In most cases, it's Michael Jabs with Olten and Mink, that talk about, you know, disruptions and scheduling that they might encounter, and give them a con, name and contact, uh, if they have any, um, special requests or, um, access issues that they want to let us know about, so.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
I want to entertain.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution one hundred twelve dash twenty-two, awarding a contract to GMH Asphalt Corporation in the amount of four hundred seventeen thousand, two hundred eighty-eight dollars and twenty-seven cents for the two thousand twenty-two street maintenance project.
I'll second.
Motion by Councilmember Sarah, and a second by Councilmember Mock. Any further discussion?
Um, one thing, Lori, I just, I believe that we said, you might have said one twelve dash twenty-two rather than?
Oh, one twenty-two.
Sorry, one twenty-two dash, sorry. Two dash twenty-two.
Okay. Um, we good?
Yes.
That Dave?
I second.
Okay, um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. All right, uh, communications, Mr. Mayor, go first.
I don't have anything tonight, Council.
Okay.
Wow. I don't have anything.
Okay. Lori?
Uh, last week I attended the fire board meeting. It was very informative. It was a nice format in that, um, the fire chief went over the reports with the, um, representatives from the township board, so they could just ask questions right then. That's the only update I have.
Do you have any updates from the Southwest Transportation Committee?
No, that would not be me.
No, I'm Southwest Transit. We've talked about this before, so you didn't know, I'll talk to you after.
I don't think.
They met last week. The SWCTC, it's the emails that you get from, can't think of her name.
I'll look it up.
Yeah.
Um, okay.
Uh, I don't have anything besides HPC is canceled next week.
Okay.
I was at the same fire board meeting with, with Lori, and fire department did a great job laying it all out for the townships, and, um, it was smooth, everything was nice, and they were happy, so other than that, I can't think of anything else that I have.
Um, just a few updates from me, just a reminder that Spring Cleanup Day, what do you call it, Reverse Christmas?
Reverse Christmas.
Will be May seventh. We had a Carver County Meter, uh, Carver, Carver County Leaders Meeting last Tuesday, and we got an overview of the redistricting process, which was, um, announced later that same day, and then another overview of the twenty twenty-two road construction projects in the county. For those of you who weren't following along, um, Carver stays in District Five as far as Carver County, so that's exactly where we are right now. The boundaries on that to the west of us are changing a little bit, so there will be an election for everybody but Ward Three this fall, so. Let's see, the Lion's Pork Chop Dinner was terrific. Lions always can fry a good pork chop, so really, really good. I wrote a letter to Senator Coleman this week, last week, um, sharing my opposition to some of the PRD limitations in the House, or I'm sorry, the Senate omnibus bill, um, that they were working at for their housing affordability. And maybe I can have Brent share that with everybody after this meeting. Um, and then the only other thing is a levy update that I think you guys are all kind of up to speed on. We met with Roger Barons from MMB, which is the Minnesota Office of Management and Budget, to get a better idea of what our local match means, kind of, does the federal stuff count? Does what we've already put into the project count? And the short answer is yes, the federal money counts towards our local match, which is great, because that's two point five million dollars off of our three point five million dollar match that we're looking at. And then, um, we're still looking for just a little bit more clarification, but we have a pretty good feeling that the money that we put into the list stations already down by the levy will also count for that, so all really, really good news. So, um, unless anybody else has anything else, that is it on my list. Entertain a motion to adjourn then.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Got a motion by Councilmember Henry?
I'll second.
A second by Councilmember Muck. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. We are adjourned, thank you all.